Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting for the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 17th, 2018. I ask that all priests rise from basement location and be followed by the pledge allegiance. Tonight, as we embark in the coming days into the Christmas and holiday season, we are ever thankful for the many blessings that have been showered upon Batavia during 2018. And we want to specifically recognize those from our community who stepped forward in a variety of volunteer efforts to make our community very, very strong and willing and spiritual and in support of those of less fortunate nature. We did a lot of great things in Batavia this year, and for organizations such as the Food Pantry, and the Clothes Closet, and the Access Toy Drive, we just have much to be thankful for, for those who are behind those efforts and who continue to do the great work that they do. We ask tonight for direction and understanding by the members of the City Council on the items of business before us, and we also ask for a special blessing to be showered upon all those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and just a special blessing to go with them as they go about their vital mission. We ask for all these blessings, knowing that we are here tonight to do what in our best of, in our hearts and minds, will be in the best interest of the future of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Callahan would you lead us to the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll, and also remind everyone that we are trying to be mindful as we use the microphone so that we are heard on TV.
Brown?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record deflect that all fourteen members of the City Council are present and accounted for this evening's meetings. We obviously have all the necessary forms. We moved item number five, items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack is chairman of governmental services. Do you have anything?
Your honor, I don't have anything this evening.
Anybody else? All right, then moving to item number six, which is a presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for November 13th, 2018, and November 20th, 2018. Building reports, November 2018. Approvals, December 14th, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $882,845.25. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,251,096.15. City council minutes for December 3rd, 2018. September and October 2018, city council financial reports. Ordinance 18-79 requesting transfer of a certain parcel from the Batavia Park District. Resolution 18-131-R authorizing the transfer of property to the Batavia Park District. Resolution 18-129-R approving the preliminary plat, final plat of subdivision for Farmstead 3, Unit 2 subdivision. Resolution 18-130-R budget amendment for health insurance premiums. And resolution 18-132-R authorizing change order number seven with Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated for Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Atack, second of Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
Atack? Aye. Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving then to item number seven, for items from the public, for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? All right, moving then to item number eight, which is a report from Batavia Main Street. We are honored to have the executive director with us here. Chris?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy holidays, everyone. Thanks for having me back again today. We are fresh on the heels of our final Main Street event of the year, which was the Winterfest Art Market, took place Friday, Saturday, and Sunday over at Water Street Studios. This is kind of the, an evolution of a craft fair that had taken place previously toward the end of November the last few years. This year, a couple of our volunteers from the artisan collective, Bree Hayes and Annie Schole, decided to take it on and join forces with Water Street Market, Water Street Studios, excuse me, combine it with their winter art show that they have going on, and it was, it was a great event, worked well for everybody. It's nice to get a couple of the different organizations in town working together. We, we kind of, we had a lot of fun with that, and vendors reported, most of the people I talked to reported that they did more business on Friday night than they had done on the whole weekend in the previous years. So, everybody's super happy with that. I'm sure those of you who were there, you saw the, the great attendance. The weather was beautiful all over town, so I think that helped a lot as well. I spent some time downtown just visiting businesses late on Saturday, early evening, and everybody was saying they had really busy days, just a lot of people out and about, having, having lunch, having meals, and doing some extra holiday shopping around town. So, another great thing where a craft show kind of brings people into town, and then the great stuff that Batavia has going on gives them a reason to stay down here all day. We opened a couple of new businesses. The Black Cactus Print House opened up, just, well, they had the grand opening just over the weekend. Couple of young guys, it's a nice business model. They started as a kind of a joint effort inside of a thin-lined tattoo shop next door. They set up in the basement over there, worked their way up, built their business, and were able to now take over the space right next door to that. They have a couple of, they do a lot of screen printing, custom work. They also have a couple of in-house, their own like clothing lines that they're really picking up some, some good energy there, so I'm excited and looking forward. They did not design Scott Salvati's jacket.
(laughing).
I saw that look on your face there.
It's from Italy.
But great business, good energy. I'm really excited for what they're gonna bring. You guys met Paula Mueller, you already knew Paula Mueller anyway, but you met her last week, or last month when we were here, and she officially got opened. She had a great start on Small Business Saturday, and things have been rolling pretty well for her, so nice to see another business opening downtown. Of course, she displaced Main Street, but we're getting pretty settled in at the Newton House. That's going well for us. Small Business Saturday, huge success. We did a raffle, we had twenty-two businesses participate in the downtown raffle. Everybody who made a purchase downtown at those businesses over, on Saturday, got an entry in the raffle. We also combined it with a toy drive, so anybody who brought in a toy got an extra entry into the raffle, so got those over to Batavia Access. We printed up some Shop Batavia bags. It was a fun little partnership with the high school graphics team. They, the graphic students actually designed the bags for us, did the screen printing in-house, and then got them out to our retailers, so they were able to give those out to customers. It's gotten a lot of attention, there was a good social media buzz over it. The stores are happy, all the retailers said they had a great weekend over the whole Small Business Saturday and Thanksgiving shopping weekend. We got a little national recognition, the Main Street America blog and their social media has talked about the Shop Batavia bags and some of the stuff we had going on that weekend, so nice to see a little attention coming from outside of Batavia as well. Over the past few weeks, we've been preparing, we have our 2019 calendar confirmed. You guys all have little magnets sitting in front of you now. No big changes to the things we do, I feel like we have a pretty good roster of events that are spaced well throughout the year. Our focus in 2019 isn't to, to bring on more things, it's more just to enhance, perfect, to do, you know, do a little more with what we're already doing, make everything work well. So, I think we're, we're off to a good start. We also passed our budget for 2019 at our board meeting last week, so nice to have another balanced budget ready to roll for next year. And mostly tonight, I just kind of wanted to come here and say thank you. Thank you to all of the volunteers, the over 5,000 hours of volunteers that we have throughout the year. Thank you to the residents of Batavia who all came out and supported our events and make everything happen. And thank you to the City Council, the mayor, and the city staff who we have to work so closely with for all these events, and it's, it's a really great relationship. Without that, we wouldn't be able to do anything. So, that's kind of where I stand on things. You know, it's the time of year where you start looking back and thinking about some of the good things that have happened throughout the year, and you get kind of reflective. I was looking at just, you know, Main Street in general, obviously, pretty large changes for Main Street this year, but so far, so good on that. The city of Batavia, though, you know, some huge residential developments that have been improved in 2018. You guys have created jobs in the industrial park, we've opened several new retail stores, a lot of economic development, a lot of excitement around there. And then I can't help but look back to November when over 9,000 Batavia residents show up and go to the ballot box and say, hey, guys, you know what? We think you guys are doing a pretty good job. And I know in those spots as elected officials, I've gotten a chance to meet all you guys, I know the dedication, the love you have for your city, and I know that nobody ever comes to a meeting and stands up and says, hey, just came in to tell you guys you're doing well. That, that just doesn't happen, but they all, 9,000 people went to the ballot box and did that for you this year, and I think that's a really good thing to, to reflect on. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, otherwise, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, see you in January.
Thank you, and thank you for all your leadership at Main Street and for what the organization is doing for our downtown. I appreciate all the innovation and great ideas, and we look forward to continued growth in that whole arena in the days ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving then to item number nine, which is ordinance 18-80, wage ordinance. Who's got this?
I have that.
Alderman Atack?
Okay, so the attached ordinance is recommend, staff's recommending cost of living increase of 2.75 for all non-collectively bargained positions, and it's, there's an addition of a building inspector code enforcement officer of pay grade 13, and addition of an assistant to the city administrator pay grade 13. If there aren't any questions or comments, I move that we approve, let's see, the ordinance number is, hold on a second.
18-80.
I move that we approve ordinance 18-80, wage ordinance.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Atack, second of Alderman Stark for the approval of ordinance 18-80, the wage ordinance. Any discussion, comments from the council? Kirk call the roll, please.
Atack? Aye. Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye. Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number 10, which is ordinance 18-82, the paid-on-call fireman's wage ordinance.
Yes, this is for calendar 2019 also, and staff is recommending a 2.75% increase in wages also for non-collectively bargained positions. So, I move that we approve ordinance 18-82.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Atack, second of Alderman Stark for the approval of ordinance 18-82, the paid-on-call fireman's wage ordinance. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Atack? Aye. Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye. Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. I want to note that the HR director has been standing at the podium, ready to jump in. He had this thing so well documented and organized, nobody had anything to say, so thank you, Wendy.
Wendy does an exceptional job with all of that, and I also want to call her and
her department out for planning an exceptional event for the employees of the city. Last Thursday, you might see some remnants of a very nice holiday party that both the human resources department worked very hard on, but so did the public works department on physically bringing it to, to be, and so I just wanted to thank both of your departments for doing that. I know all the employees of the city really appreciated that. An update on where things are at in terms of picking up the leaves and brush. On the west side, they've completed the, the leaf collection, however, we want to make sure that our, our streets remain beautiful, so this week we are going to be focusing on doing some street sweeping and cleaning up after all of those leaves that kind of got hardened to the road through those storms. And then we'll make one last pass through the east side of the city, and that is to pick up those leaves that were hiding under piles of snow. We just want to make sure that we're doing all we can to get all of that brush picked up by the end of the season. For residents who are still trying to clean up some of the leaves in their yard, you can place those leaves in the brown craft paper bags, and they do not require a sticker at any time during the month of December. You can just set those out to the curb on your normal collection day. And then yard waste resumes in mid-March. We will not have a committee of the whole meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, December 18th, and so our next scheduled meeting will be the City Council meeting on Monday, January 7th. In community and economic development, community development has been mostly involved with the Windmill Landings Project, which if you recall, that's another senior housing development which is across from Windmill Manor on Hawks Drive, which is behind the Walmart. And also, at the plan commission meeting last week, there was review and approval of the Winding Creek Landmark Project, which will bring over 200 single-family homes to our community over the course of the next couple of years. And then in the communications department, we have a new video that we posted to social, and it shows the life-saving automated CPR device that was purchased through a grant from the benevolent foundation and the local union. Chris LaFleur, one of our firefighters, demonstrates the use of that equipment and how important and essential it is to their life-saving activities. Also, most of our commissions have a, a staff liaison, and for the Batavia Environmental Commission, that member has changed. It was Byron Richardson, who is our wastewater superintendent, and now we have changed to Chris Cudworth. Chris Cudworth has a, a big background in conservancy, and also we want to make sure we're doing all we can to provide communications about all that the Batavia Environmental Commission is doing. Of course, Byron will continue to be a subject matter expert and advise them because he has a great deal of knowledge about the environmental manners on which they work. And then finally, the Batavia Fire Department Battalion Chief Sean Stevens asked that we start posting some PSAs that have been created by the responder safety organization. We've downloaded some of these videos, and we posted one today that was called "Slow Down and Move Over." And while all of us know in the back of our minds that when we see flashing lights ahead of us, we need to move over and, and stay out of their way, and that when we see the flashing lights that are coming from behind, that we pull over to the curb and get out of their way, it's, I think it's a really important message. And then also about all of our public works employees who are out there on the street performing necessary services, you know, just, just to remember, all of them have families at home too who worry about their safety, and that we should be mindful to try to move with caution as we proceed around them. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions? I did get asked today by a lady who was gonna put her bag of leaves out today, or I think she lives on, I know she lives on the west side, so her pickup day would be this coming Thursday, I guess it would be. And she just wanted to make sure that if she didn't get them all, she could still put a bag out on December 27th, the week after Christmas. But there, because of the Christmas holiday, I'm assuming maybe the pickup will be a day later than normal?
Yes.
That was the question, is what day, and so that would be probably the 28th then.
Right.
That the west side would have their last, if they want to put bags of leaves out, that that's the last day.
Correct.
Okay, I think I then, I don't need to call her back because I think I got it right, but that was...
Excellent. Sounds like it's my neighbor, I'm on Thursdays too.
So, anyway, appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, the community development, Alderman Brown?
Well, your honor, as our city administrator just mentioned, there are no more meetings the rest of the year, so we don't have any meetings to talk about. Little bit of a report, though, I just want to mention, I think this coming year, the very first quarter's gonna be kind of busy. As Laura just mentioned, we've got at least one new housing development that's gonna be in front of the committee before it comes at a council. We've hopefully got some redevelopment on McKee Street and Randall Road. We've obviously got some new buildings that are gonna be built over in the industrial park, along with some priorly, or previously approved residential units over on Kirk Street. And then obviously, we've had some new things happening in downtown Batavia too. You've got the, what is that, River City Pizza?
River View.
River View Pizza that's gonna open up, and I'm sure there'll be other things happening beyond that. And then, of course, we've got the Shams Club that we're all wondering what's gonna happen there someday on that piece of property, so I hope that'll come in front of us soon, sooner than later. But I think it's gonna be a busy, busy year for the committee. One of the other items that it's gonna be in front of us is conversation on the reserves and how much of a ceiling we should have on the reserves, and how much of a basement we should have on the reserves. So, that'll be an interesting conversation, and then as Alderman Callahan has talked about in our other budget meetings, we're also gonna be exploring what other ideas we can come up with for increased revenue without having to attack property taxes, and, and just look at any way we can to, to increase revenue in any way we can, without doing the wrong thing, obviously. You know, trying to be creative and, and think outside the box on that. So, it's gonna be a busy year. That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, government services, Alderman Atack?
Government services doesn't have anything the rest of the year either.
City services, Alderman Wolf?
Same thing, nothing happening.
Public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing happening for the rest of the year, your honor.
Okay. We have other business that come before us? Alderman Stark?
Over the weekend, I noticed a lot of activity up near the Fabian East Windmill Forest Preserve, and about 150 students from Geneva High School, Batavia High School, Matea Valley, and Marmion, and St. Charles North were there cleaning out invasive species of common buckthorn and Japanese honeysuckle. And they worked for about three hours, and luckily, it was 45-degree weather, but there was a competition to see who had the largest and the neatest brush piles, and there's this very random-looking trophy, but Batavia High School took it home. And so I just, it's not sports, it's not academics, but it's a great community service and terrific for the environmental commission, and this was cosponsored by the Batavia Environmental Commission as well as the Geneva Natural Resources Committee. So, it was, it's a, it's a very cool thing, but the trophy is just bizarre. So, but it's another thing Batavia has excelled at, is community service.
Anybody else? Well, going to the mayor's report, I just want to end the year by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, joyous Happy New Year, and thank all the members of the City Council for their continued great service to our citizens. As I said in the prayer, we are very blessed in this town to have groups like the Food Pantry and the Clothes Closet, and certainly Access Toys. We did the actual toy distribution a week ago Sunday, and I'm told that we served well over 600 children, who are all from Batavia, they were all identified. Who I want to shout out to is the really tremendous service that that whole movement got from specifically the Batavia Fire Department, and they helped move countless toys through that whole thing. And then they were there for various sundry, other smaller tasks that needed to be done. And then this past Sunday, the Batavia Police Department stepped forward, and the chief had about a half dozen officers actually involved in it. And because we had a line of people who had been out in the cold and whatever, we got some efforts to keep them a little bit warm in the process, we brought a bus in for a few hours, and that helped. But we had a whole bunch of people there, and what you have to worry about when we do this is people trying to crash the gate, because we do give away nice stuff, and they, we try to restrict it, or we do restrict it, to Batavia residents. So, we have a whole bunch of visitors stop by and try to figure out, by having the officers standing there in their uniforms next to the guy that's gonna check in, that seems to discourage the whole bunch of people to get back in the car and go in some different direction. And so, we have now what I would call annual events. It's a toy drive where we have certain citizens that look forward to coming, getting in line, and then having their pictures taken with the Batavia police officers. And then they get emailed pictures, and they Photoshop themselves with their cameras and everything. So, it is quite a community-friendly event on behalf of our public safety entities, and certainly, I think it speaks well, as you may know, we blocked off part of Water Street and First Street this year to kind of facilitate it a little bit better, and I give a shout out then to the public works who helped us put up some barricades and cones and whatever. So, it was really a citywide effort, virtually involving almost every city department, and it's something that as a community, I think we should be very proud of, and thank all of you for your donations to that and helped it do what it was meant to do. And it was, this was, as they said, the 70th year of the actual toy distribution. Since 1948, Batavia has done this in some form or fashion every year, and I've had people come in my office and make very nice cash donations to this, who tell me that 55, 60 years ago, they were a benefactor of this same movement as a small child, they thought they were not gonna have a Christmas, and then Batavia Rotary Club showed up with toys for them, basically during the beginning stages of this thing, and the toys had largely been put together by the Batavia Fire Department. So, again, this is a cherry story in the history of our town, and one that I think we can all take a great, great degree of pride in, because truly, at the end of the day, I think it can be said that Batavia strives very valiantly to try to take, take care of their very own. And we do this, I think, through this and the other organizations that we have, and I would hope that in the days ahead, whoever's here in the City Council will certainly remember this and... well over six hundred children who are all from Batavia, they were all identified. But who I want to shout out to is the really tremendous service that that whole movement got from specifically the Batavia Fire Department, and they helped move countless toys through that whole thing. And then they were there for various sundry, other smaller tasks that needed to be done. And then this past Sunday, the Batavia Police Department stepped forward, and the chief had about a half dozen officers actually involved in it. And because we had a line of people who had been out in the cold and whatever, we got some efforts to keep them a little bit warm in the process, we brought a bus in for a few hours, and that helped. But we had a whole bunch of people there, and what you have to worry about when we do this is people trying to crash the gate, because we do give away nice stuff, and they, we try to restrict it, or we do restrict it to Batavia residents, so we have a whole bunch of visitors stop by and try to figure out, and by having the officers standing there in their uniforms next to the guy that's gonna check in, that seems to discourage the whole bunch of people to get back in the car and go in some different direction. And so, we have now what I would call it annual events, it's a toy drive where we have certain citizens that look forward to coming, getting in line, and then having their pictures taken with the Batavia police officers. And then they get emailed pictures, and they Photoshop themselves with their cameras and everything. So it is quite a community-friendly event on behalf of our public safety entities, and